Okay, this is a workshop of the Acton Main Planning Board. We're meeting at the Acton Town Hall. It is Wednesday, February 23rd, and it is about 3 o'clock, maybe 2 or 3 minutes after. The meeting workshop was noticed. It is not a meeting of the Acton Planning Board in terms of any decision-making. There will be no votes taken regardless of how many Planning Board members are here. It's simply designed for us to work on proposed verbiage for warrant articles. Anything that we discussed today and agree on by consensus or otherwise will be presented to the Planning Board for any voting or decision-making. So currently, Planning Board members that are here are John Quah and Bernard Broder, and also present in the room is Jason Sevigny, our code enforcement officer.
Gavin should be here anytime.
And others may come along. So I've been away for a couple of weeks. So what I would suggest, John, but I'll certainly defer to you because you've been here, but I would suggest we try to look at whatever's going to be least involved, least cumbersome for us to believe it's ready for the Planning Board so we can get this moving and get to warrant finance as soon as possible. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we, I think we chose 3.
Solar.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but solar, mixed use, and tiny houses.
So those are the ones that you believe are the most ready?
Yes, but I think it would be worthwhile, just like we did with mixed use here as we were just opening our folders, that still has 3 changes. And where you didn't get to go through, the tiny house and, you know, the other couple, I think it'd be worthwhile just to go through and make sure we agree with your note.
Yeah, okay, so I'm of the impression that of those, solar would involve the most scrutiny for us to look at. Do you agree?
It's certainly the longest, yes.
So why don't we start with one of the others?
Okay.
And try and get them done.
We're good with mixed use with 3. There are still 3 changes required on that, Jason, then I guess you gotta get the contractor to do. Ashley said she couldn't do it.
Meaning North Star?
Yeah.
Okay, I was trying to set up here, so what's...
Well, I can give you my notes.
I should have had them in my notes, too. And are we talking about the ones with the headings, the highlighted?
Just for mixed use, so we want to just go through these one by one.
Everything we're working on is white.
Right, okay, so mixed use, it was, you needed it highlighted, you needed the structure and the tract of land, and then the building structures on the top?
Yes, structures up top, highlight the N in the Aquifer, and remove tract of land.
Changes were made, and she, I will have them printed up for you. They should have, yeah, they were made. They've already been made, everything's been made, even...
So is that something that you think Ashley can do while we're still here today?
Yeah, give me 1 second, I'll even put it online for you.
Because that would be great, so that if we're clear, final form is ready, then we can just say, yep, that's ready to go.
So right here is your clean draft and your mixed use. You have, structures has been replaced. You have the highlighted N on the Aquifer Protection District, and a building or structure with a variety of contemporary... Yeah, so all we did was we removed the tract of land and replaced it with just a building. So those are the 3 changes that were made.
Okay, well, just for your benefit, Bernie, just to remind you, we came back to these being CEO review for the 2 commercial zones and the mixed use.
Yes, I remember that.
Everything else was...
Yeah, everything else. Yep, I remember that. Okay, so...
So those will be made, so obviously, as you see those, I'll just print them up for everybody.
Okay, so I will make a note, if you agree, John, that's ready for the Planning Board.
Yeah.
Okay, Jason will print.
I will forward this to her right now so she can...
And am I correct, we do not have a meeting tomorrow night?
No.
Not till next Thursday?
Okay. All right. You get a Thursday off.
Yeah, okay, so tiny houses?
Yeah.
Should be pretty fast.
That one should be pretty, pretty good.
Okay, so we've added, it's letter K, it's underlined, it's bold.
They're allowed everywhere, but, oh, it doesn't have the, I wonder if that matters?
Residential structure, so it's allowed...
You know, does it matter that we don't have? It probably does.
That's what I was just gonna say.
You gotta have the districts on this.
The districts are not up here, so you don't know what these letters pertain to?
Yeah.
These are on, ones that we did in-house?
Yes.
In-house.
Okay. So we need to add districts. Yeah, okay, good. Yeah, I was looking at that and wondered if I was wrong about that, but I think it needs to be there.
Yeah, you're correct. If it's not there, people will assume otherwise.
Okay, so tiny houses, it has requiring CEO review, and, excuse me, excuse me, as not being permitted in Little Osipin, Shoreland, Resource Protection, is that right?
It's, it's a review for Aquifer.
Yeah, but how can it not be allowed in Shoreland if you could have a single...
You're not allowed additional dwelling units.
What's that?
You're not allowed, so a lot of those tiny homes...
ADUs.
Or ADUs, you're not allowed in Shoreland. If that's, some people were using those as additional dwelling units.
Yeah, but if someone had the lot size to have a single-family dwelling in a shoreline, Shoreland area, you have to allow it. That's state law. Anywhere...
Same.
Yeah, so that is, I believe, an error.
Yeah, in that case, if somebody's coming forward, you're right, with a, a single-family...
I mean, it would be unusual, because you have to have, what, 2 acres in Acton to have a single-family?
Did we set these, did the Planning Board set these, these Rs in, the permitted and not permitted?
Yes, we did.
Should I wait to change them, or should I just...
Well, I'm gonna suggest that you change it, please, and then bring it back Thursday for a vote.
We're obviously not gonna make the decision.
It's my belief that, yes, there has to be a vote, but there is no decision to be made because it's state law.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were, we were focused on the ADU issue and just kinda blew by if somebody wanted to put a tiny home on a lot.
Yeah, so that's been changed and saved.
So that should be an R.
They're all Rs across the board.
Well, no, there's a couple of Ns.
Well, if...
Little Osipin.
Resource Protection.
Resource Protection, are, are single-family homes allowed in those?
There's certain circumstances where they are, yeah, so...
Okay, then they need to all be Rs.
Then I would...
Yeah, it has to be allowed anywhere.
Same thing, though, there are requirements, right? They'd have to have the lot size to build a house.
Yeah, everything's subject to setbacks, requirements. If, like in the Resource Protection, you can, if, if there's, yeah, there's, there's a lot of requirements that go around.
Single-family dwelling is not allowed in Resource Protection per the chart. That's the only N.
Okay, so, and that is the 1, 2, 3, 4th one over?
1, 2, 3, 4, yeah.
Yeah, so that's N.
See, this has been valuable already.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so if you're, if Bernard is correct by saying it should follow suit with a single-family dwelling.
It has to, yeah.
The only one that has an N is the Aquifer Protection.
Right, CEO is becoming...
That has been changed.
Okay.
I think leaving that, I just wanted them for their folders later.
And so...
Have I sent you?
Yeah. Were there any, on the next page, were there any changes made in those definitions?
No, that's the state language. The only difference, the only difference was for the definition, we put a period as a living quarters.
For that one, but everybody else is not here.
And then the, sort of, the detail about that, we put back in 514, in a new section in 514.3.
Okay, great, thanks, actually. Okay, so that, with those changes... So Jason, are you clear on that? What needs to happen with tiny houses?
What was this one?
We need to add districts at the top.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. We need to have everything be an R except for...
I've already made those changes, I just gotta add the...
Okay, great. Aquifer.
Add districts.
And you changed those, okay. So that's that.
So tiny house is done, mixed use has been reviewed and done.
Yep. Oh, this, um, structure, that would be pretty quick then to do.
Yeah, I gotta go to the definition.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it. I thought you guys did it.
We talked about it, but I don't...
I have.
Is that in your files?
It's given to me today. Oh, is this, oh, you gave me yours when we were having a discussion.
Oh, okay.
Let me look at my, what I have over there. Oh, I, hmm, we, I don't see it on my desk, but me and her did it the other day, I gotta... I'll get her up.
Okay.
Yeah.
John?
Yeah.
And we already have a dwelling unit.
Yeah, there's more to that, Bernie. I was gonna look through the section in 5 where the language is a little bit problematic, but I don't know if we're gonna have time. If you wanna do that, we could go to that. Jason's very interested in that.
Okay, I'll leave it to you whether you think we should do that today or say that, you know, to get. I'm of the mindset, I'd like to get done as much as possible, everything we've been working on without introducing new things.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, so that...
Because it did turn out to be more than just the definition, so it's gonna be more involved.
Okay, does that bring us to solar? Residential rental.
Well, solar was the one, last week we said was gonna be good to go, so...
Okay.
I think solar should be the one we...
Do that now?
And frankly, that was the end of the meeting.
Yeah.
And everyone, I ended up okaying that we could put it forward, but I did not go through page by page in my notes from the latest one. Everybody said it's close enough.
Okay.
So I think it would be worthwhile to go through.
And this one was done by the consultants, correct?
Yes.
By North Star. So hopefully that also reduces anything that we're gonna have to do.
Yeah.
They know a lot more about it than I do.
Part of my notes, we had some discussion points, and I don't think there was any finalized...
Well, you know, the other thing that occurs to me, I'm glad to go through it with you, but if the majority, was it the board itself that felt it was ready to go?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So maybe we should just let the board look at it again tomorrow, the next meeting, unless you, I'm glad to do it if you want.
I got this typo already. I'm not sure. If you look at 229-2D...
Energy?
Yeah, on solar. We sort of introduce a system that really isn't, what we do is we split solar energy systems. So that definition, we talk about roof-mounted, right, or accessory? Yeah, so, talks about onsite, so can be, can be accessory, when it's incidental, blah, blah, blah. When you get to 229-2D, a ground-mounted accessory solar energy, if you just stop there, you think, okay, that, that falls under energy system accessory that are Rs across the board. D says ground-mounted is required, requires a site plan review. This was really the concern I had.
What page was it on?
It'd be on the 2nd page of this, right here.
His mind's not the same as yours.
This is the one he just handed us.
It shouldn't, it should say 529.
Suppose, you should have another one over there. The one she reprinted, because they, they did the work.
Okay, and is that, this included in this, so this I don't see, hopefully.
So if you go to the 2nd page, 29-2D. And I don't know if this is a problem, but in our chart, we have said accessory systems are CEO review across the board.
Mm-hmm.
There, we're saying a type, one type of accessory system is a site plan review. Doesn't refer to it as medium or large, it's an accessory system.
If it's going on other than a single or two-family dwelling. Yeah, I think that's consistent with what we talked about, that if somebody had a system in their yard where they live, that that's different from it being other than somebody's residence, didn't we?
We had a discussion like that, yes. I'm, I'm not so much concerned about, well, even if it's, well, it does say other than a house, but if I go to this chart, if I wanna put a ground unit on a lot next to my house, this chart would tell me, I just gotta get Jason's review. The verbiage says I gotta go through a site plan review.
That's what I'm looking, I see where you're coming from, but I also see that subject to accessories, like systems, accessories to use other than single and family, two-family dwelling units are subject, so I think you can clean up the verbiage a little bit so that it states that if you're looking more at a, a medium or large farm, is that what you're saying? It needs to specifically state?
Well, I don't know, Jason, I'm just saying, in my mind, there's a disconnect. The definition for accessory talks about energy being created for onsite use to the structure located on the same lot. So let's say I have a garage, and now I wanna put a, a thing, a ground-mounted panel in. The chart says I can go to you, the words say I have to have a site plan review. If you guys don't think it's a disconnect, that, that was my problem with this one, we just kinda blew by it yesterday.
So this, what your concern is, if I understand it right, would arise if somebody, like some of our neighbors have their house on one lot on the water, and then across the street, they own property, and if they wanted to put a panel on that lot across the street...
On the ground.
Because it's not, right, on the ground, connected to their house. That's what you're worried about, concerned.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, or somebody has an existing, I don't know, even a business, right, not a house, even a business, that they're gonna use the panel for energy for the business, and it's gonna be on the ground instead of CEO review because it's on the ground, they're saying site plan.
Site plan's pretty extensive.
Yeah.
Like, we even say just conditional use, if they're using the power for their own, for their own sake, that's different, but if they're generating power to be put back into the grid.
Well, then it's not, accessory is, it's not going into the grid unless it's extra.
So it wouldn't need a site plan, I don't see it needing it, I see where you're coming from, John, 100%.
Oh, well, you know what, actually, this, if I understand this right, this doesn't refer to the location of the panel as to the use.
Yeah, it's, whatever's not being used for a single or two-family dwelling.
So you could have it across the street if it's being used for your single-family dwelling. It could be on the ground across the street because the use, this governs the use, not the location.
And what if I have, what if my apple orchard shack, I wanna, I wanna put a ground-mounted solar thing to, to power the, power it for when we're open?
Well, I think, my recollection, and we can have this discussion again as a board, but that there was concern, there was a desire to have ground-mounted units other than for dwelling use, to have some sort of a review, because people didn't want it just cropping up anywhere visually and all that.
No argument.
So I think that does track with what people...
No argument.
Yep.
I'm just saying it's a disconnect here. Then I think we need an extra line up here to talk about ground-mounted, other uses than homes ground-mounted. If nobody else thinks it's a big deal, I don't care, but I believe people will pick up on that at the, at the Town Hall.
So how would you, just because I have difficulty following that, I, I don't have trouble following what you're saying.
I'm not sure how to fix it, we'd either have to...
Oh, I see, because this doesn't distinguish roof-mounted from...
Yes.
Ground-mounted. Okay, got it. So...
Yeah, I'm not sure how to fix it, because even, the definition doesn't break it out by solar, or by roof or ground.
Well, could there be 2 grids? One for ground-mounted, one for roof-mounted? And distinguish them?
Yeah, but then, yes, this may be a rat hole I shouldn't have gone down, because then you got, ground-mounted for your home, as you were saying, is in okay use across the street.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's kind of a narrow area where we're saying, we want you to come.
Well, so, the next section is 5.29.3 is for off-grid stuff, which I can understand the site plan review for something like that, or generating power to send back into the grid. I think this 5.9.2 section is, first, it's, it's, it's considered to be for your dwelling. Am I right by saying that? Accessory to the principal use.
What, what item are you looking at, Jason?
Um, I'm kinda trying to compare 2 sections to, into 1. So 5.9.2, it's talking about the energy systems generating power for onsite consumption, where 5.29.3 is offsite, meaning, you know, your 5.29.3 is gonna be more like your, your H-road systems.
Right.
Where this one's, like, 5.9.2 is gonna power your house, does that require a site plan review to power your own house? I don't...
No, that says it don't have to for a single or a two-family home. My question is, though, what if, you know, again, somebody has a, their shed that they keep their trucks in, that they now wanna power with a solar panel, he's gotta get a site plan review.
Oh, no, I, I follow you, but I don't think that should be required, no, it should be...
Oh, I agree, it shouldn't be.
It shouldn't be, so you're putting through somebody through a lot of extensive...
For something that's accessory to...
Yeah, so, do we just change that site plan review to CEO review?
Wait a second.
Well, we don't, if it's a CEO review, we don't have to say anything about it, because it's up, that's what accessory system says up above in the chart.
Okay, and 5.29.2... Okay, and 5.29.2. Whoop, just one second. Yeah. Solar energy systems generating power for onsite consumption or to offset, let's just leave it for onsite consumption, shall be considered accessory to the principal use.
Do you think he might have missed a word because?
And so.
In, in section C, it says are not subject to site plan review, this one is saying it is, do you think it's supposed to say not subject to? Site plan review, maybe?
Because he added the homes and I don't think so, I think they were trying to capture that discussion Bernie was referring to that we had at that time. Where we were concerned.
Let me go to his, I have a section, I have his old one that has the actual notes in it, so.
So depending on the size, 5.29.3 says if they're generating offsite consumption, then they're not accessory and they have to conform to solar farm medium, solar farm large. So I would think you're okay as long as it's for onsite use. Whether it's on your garage across the street or on your house.
Right, so you would make D read like C. Like eliminate the single family and two-family dwellings.
Accessory to uses, um. Accessory to uses other than, yeah, that kind of.
I'm trying to remember, it was, the, the discussion we had, there was concern about someone putting one in the lot next to the house.
Mm-hmm.
Didn't necessarily.
To, accessory to uses. Okay, so currently you could put a panel on your garage.
Mm-hmm.
Across the street. If it's for onsite use. The way I'm reading this, if it's on something other than a dwelling, then it's subject to site plan review. So you can put it on your garage, but if you want to do it on the ground, then you're gonna have to.
Yes.
Okay.
But then that's different than what the use chart says.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I, I wouldn't think that's something that's gonna come up a lot. I, I'm not saying it doesn't need to be addressed, but I'm more inclined to think that if it required CEO approval or site plan review, that it's not gonna be, come up that often?
I, you're right, I don't think it would happen very much at all, I mean, I can't, there, you know, what, what do we got? The dog place maybe wants to put in a panel, I don't know, I don't think it would come up much, but it's just a disconnect. And that won't be lost on people reading this in the.
Yeah.
At the town hall. And I'd hate to get it thrown out just because of it.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know what the answer is, but I, I'd, I'd be willing to say we could uh, just make D read like the roof mounted, take out the bit about the dwellings and just make it read like the roof mounted.
What if we just had them insert that, the word, um, not sub, so on the other one it says the systems are not subject to site plan review? What if we just put dwellings are not, you know, the systems are not subject to site plan review?
Well, but my point is if it's not a house, like if, if somebody wanted, if, you know, Grammy dogs came to you and said they wanted to put a panel on their building, you go through the CEO review process.
Well, that's for ons, we're talking about onsite consumption, not offsite.
Yeah, yeah, this is all about onsite consumption. If Grammy wanted to, to have a panel for her own use, if the garage is being built for something, wanted to have a panel for their own use. And Bernie's right, I don't think it's gonna happen much, it's just, it's a, it's a potential disconnect.
Yeah, the scenario you're describing, as I read it, would not come up if Grammy Rose or a similar organization wanted to put a panel on the roof.
Right.
But if they want to put it on the ground, then it does, because it's not. Uh, well, actually, those buildings arguably are dwellings, but, but anyway, I get the concept.
Yeah.
I get what you're saying.
I don't know as well resolve this here, we need the, the full board, but I guess we should maybe give a recommendation.
Yeah, if you'd like to highlight the issue we need to visit as a board, that would be good. Uh, one thing I do see indeed that I think needs correction is where it says accessory to uses other than single and two-family dwellings, I think it should say and multiple family dwellings, because if somebody builds like a four-unit apartment house, that's not a two-family, that's a multiple. A two-family is a multiple, but not all multiples are two-family. So I would suggest that.
I just highlighted that.
Yeah.
And then I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
My recommendation would to be simp, because I don't think it's gonna happen much and you would get to review it anyway, but I would make D to read ground mounted, um, accessory solar energy systems are not subject to site plan review, period. Cause they're accessory to use, right? It's not like a farm, they're not selling it offsite, but if Johnny's apple orchard wanted to put one in to, to fire up the whatever, I think that's the simplest solution.
Well, so then actually you could just say accessory solar energy generation systems are not subject.
Yeah, both.
That takes care of both, you don't have to.
Have two paragraphs, you can.
Yeah. And so if you do that, where are accessory? Um, no, I'm looking at that. Solar energy system accessory. Okay, yeah, now this, I want to make sure I'm understanding this right. 5.29.2, solar energy systems generating power for onsite consumption or to offset electrical use of onsite accounts shall be considered accessory to the principal use. Now, if I go up and look at the chart, item G, solar energy system accessory, is that what this is referring to? Has an R, so that says CEO review for any such system, if I'm understanding this correctly.
I see where you're coming from and I agree, I, I, that's kind of where, that brings me back to where I think I'm, we're missing a word. Cause where the other C says it's not subject, I think this should say it's not subject as well.
Bernie, I was looking at something else, what, what was the definition you were reading that you see a disconnect?
5.29.2.
Okay.
Solar energy systems generating power for onsite consumption or to offset electrical use onsite accounts shall be considered accessory to the principal use. So does that not make it fall under G accessory?
Which paragraph are you looking at?
I'm reading this.
Okay.
Shall be considered accessory to the principal use. So then if I go up here, solar accessory, that says they all require CEO review.
Right, good, yeah.
Okay.
I don't think that's a disconnect.
The intent, yep, there would all, so there would always be a CEO review.
Right.
And then the only question is whether we jump from CEO review to site plan review.
For this one specific.
Understood.
And I think there's two ways you could address that, one is we could make it one paragraph, as you said. Paragraph C, roof mounted and ground mounted accessory solar energy generation systems, meaning for onsite use, are not subject to site plan review.
Yeah, but if we've said they're subject to CEO review, why do we need to say they're not subject to site plan review?
Uh, I, yeah, that's an even, that's a even, yes, that's an even easier one.
Just take them out if, okay, so we'll discuss that for board discussion.
Right, so recommendation is C and D come out.
Yeah, that's what I just, I just put merge.
Yeah, remove.
Remove.
Possibly remove.
Possibly remove, that's a simple.
I mean, if we're saying, if we've already allowed that they're subject to site, to CEO review, then why do we need to say that they're not subject to site plan review?
Okay.
Okay. What else did you have, John?
I'm not sure I have any other big concerns.
Okay.
Oh, um, we talked about this and on 529, couple of pages further, 529.3.
Yep.
Uh, B4.
Okay.
We talked about Gavin actually brought up in the past, uh, location of any public or private road or right-of-way that is contiguous to the property. You know, he wanted to get the private roads in. And I think in the interest of, we all of a sudden had this deadline imposed on us, he was willing to let that go, so I, I wouldn't fall on my sword about that.
Yeah, I put in a question to add, private road.
I think that was it.
Okay, and I really, I haven't had a chance, cause I've been away to read this, so I will read that more carefully before that meeting.
Yeah, there was a typo back where they described, oh, they made the change, okay, resource protection, that changed to give. Okay. There was back on the last page, they had referred to a, a stream protection zone, which didn't correspond with us. It was resource protection zone.
Okay.
So private road and strike C and D in 29 to, two proposed changes.
Yep.
What do you want to do next? We did the definition, you want to do rentals? Cause that was the one we, when we went over it again, we definitely wanted your take on it.
Yeah, let me just, I want to take a look at this.
Why did the contractor yards get thrown in the back burner?
Um, because of timing.
Yeah.
We had to pick what we wanted to make sure we got done and a perception of what are
As with.
Things that really affect people the most right now, like is that a really pervasive problem?
It is right now for me.
Yeah.
Well, that's just the nature of the, of the, of the job. I was just curious, I wasn't here when that got put on the, in the back.
It, it, um, yeah, as with any of these things, even like your definition, you know, it's, it warrants more thought and the, you start pulling the string and it's a long string.
I agree, there's a lot more than just a, just a simple change.
Right.
Okay, I'm moving along.
Which one?
Well, I was just looking at structures and it's been in the, the definition all along. I'm just, I find it interesting that satellite dishes are included. I mean, they, they have nothing to do with supporting, sheltering or enclosing people, animals, goods or property.
Takes up ground space, so some people might have defined that as a structure.
Yeah, and they're probably a lot less frequent, you know, they don't, they're not as prevalent as they were, but anyway.
So on to rentals, is that what you're doing right now?
Uh.
Yeah.
Yes, now I gotta find it again.
Yeah, which this one has the chart on top of it.
Oh, that's mixed. Did we do next use?
Yeah, that was the first one we did, that had the three changes.
Oh, I see, I think I see what happened, Jason brought this up after, I think.
Yeah, he brought it, he, he, they made, they had the changes and.
It's changed to structures.
Yeah, it just never got printed up and put in.
Track, okay, so this we believe is ready.
Yeah.
Okay. Rentals, okay, residential rentals.
Did you get a ch- chance to talk to the chief?
That answers your question.
Yeah. Um, one of the things we said, Bernie, and I'll let, I'll shut up and let you read it, but you'll remember the discussion about max, maximum occupancy. And, um, we, we ended up saying what we'd do is break that away from the septic system discussion and just simply say they gotta have a main approved system in use. Which also minimizes fear of, you know, some huge expense. Um, but that we still needed to address occupancy and Jason's gonna ask the chief if he'd be willing, cause he's gonna walk through for safety on these things, to, to say, to give him a maximum occupancy for the building. And so we still need that answer.
I'm putting in a reminder right now. And we want him to, just to define what he does his, what he does as walk-through?
You know, so if it's a, a two-bedroom, is it you know, what's reasonable given the egress and the windows and blah, 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 is it, is it you know, for a family in each bedroom, for eight, is that reasonable? And from a safety perspective, he would certainly be the one to be able to, in my opinion, to be able to make that call. And from a safety perspective, he would certainly be the one to be able to, in my opinion, to be able to make that call.
Now let's see if this will remind me.
Okay, I'm looking at the second page, 5.30, residential rental units. And I think line two, the comma should come out after 30 days. Or within 30 days of first holding the property out.
Yeah.
For rental, or renting the property thereafter, then the comma.
Okay, where are we here? I just got back on there.
Uh, after days at the bottom of the, of the first one.
Right there.
Within 30 days, comma, just take that comma out.
On D, that addresses fire extinguishers being accessible on every floor. Do we need to add something, like, should it say at least one charged? Or operational fire extinguisher? As we did with the smoke alarm?
Yeah, operational, probably, huh?
Yeah.
Because you are supposed to check those every once in a while.
Yep.
So each unit should have a, an operational?
Yeah, so under D, at least one operational fire extinguisher shall be accessible. And so forth.
Two, two things, Bernie, one, on the grid, if you look up on the top of the chart, the resource protection does not allow, um, single-family dwellings, ADUs, two-family dwellings, multiple-family dwellings, nor tiny homes. In our chart for rentals, we have a CEO review. This generated some discussion. If somebody has an existing home in the resource protection district, I thought we had changed it, Jason, but I guess we came down in case someone had an existing home or, you know, an existing structure they could rent? Is that where we came down, why that didn't get changed?
I was making changes, what were you saying?
In the grid, the, um, use chart.
Yeah.
We had talked about making resource protection a no for rentals. And I know Pat said, what if somebody had an existing home? And we didn't know if that was a, a big issue or not. And so I see in the final here, it didn't change.
Didn't, uh, so my concern with that would be was, is it anything within the shoreline? In a sense?
Well, the, uh, and, yeah, and again, we need the chart on that, by the way.
Yeah, I was just noticing that, too. Did you see that?
Yeah.
Jason, yeah, needs the districts.
I didn't see it.
Well, shoreline is, is your review. It's a no for ADU, but it's your review for a single-family house. It's a no for resource protection, so the question was, and if you look at Gavin's point, and he might even bring it in today, the resource protection is really small areas throughout the town that they defined. And so either existing, would there be existing, um, structures that they want to rent out?
So why, oh, okay, yeah. Wait a minute.
It doesn't appear to me like it would be.
I didn't bring my, oh, my ordinances right there, yeah.
It would be a big issue, which is why we left it there, but.
Why would a, this may be because tiny houses were not included in the shoreline district in error. But now that we've corrected that, or will be, why would they not be permitted to use a tiny house in a shoreline district for a rental?
They can't, purely chart. I was talking about resource protection. The next one over, the fourth one over.
Yeah, but, but currently the chart says no.
I gotta change it on this one.
Mine says R. This is the one they just brought up.
Chart that says no.
Oh, you look.
But again, that may be because that's what we were.
Oh, okay, yeah. So, right, so that has, that has to agree.
That has to track.
So, looking at the screen behind you, this, these all have to be Rs?
Wait a minute, hang on, let me get this. Yeah. The only N will be resource protection.
Which is the fourth one. And these all have to be highlighted, because these are also changes, if I'm correct by saying that.
Highlight and underline, because there were no tiny homes before, so it's all new language.
All right, so this will be, how do I?
Although I don't think you need to do it on this.
You have it up here on residential units.
Yes, but this is about residential units, so I don't think you want to do it.
This is already except, if that tiny home is passed.
If it passes, it's in, if it's not, it'll have to be a reserved section for later or something.
Well, that's the problem, is we're, we have K and then we have L.
Right. So we're addressing L with, uh, rentals. Same thing in 29 and 30 at the back of chapter five. If one goes, if tiny doesn't go, we still have, no, if solar doesn't go, we have tiny at 5.30. So we'll just have to put reserved or something for 5.29 in the book. That would be my argument, whether the, you know, if, if somebody wants to not allow it because of that kind of administrative, you know, I give up.
I, I was, I was there present at that last public hearing.
I know.
It wasn't that pleasant for the, yeah.
Yeah.
I wouldn't be surprised. So why not just do it if there's any question?
Do what?
Shade it and underline it. If, if we're concerned it might be potentially viewed.
No, no, I'm, I'm saying if tiny homes doesn't get approved, now we're saying rentals is L. And some, some.
Yes.
Resident might say, whoa, wait a minute, you can't have an O. You know, well, we'll reserve K, it's not gonna be used, you didn't approve it, but we can still use L, would be my argument. I mean, it's just a silly administrative thing, if they want to shoot it down because of that.
Mm-hmm.
So I wouldn't highlight it here, because we're not talking about tiny houses.
Okay, got it.
And we should talk about them in the sequencing.
Yeah.
Of the warrant, tiny houses should come before rentals. But that does need to agree, at any rate, the Rs.
Yeah, and should we, I, I mean, I honestly don't know. Should we, like, residential rental units, put L and then below it, put in parentheses, K, in the event that? I think it's silly to have to do it.
It is.
And I agree that the outcome could hinge on that.
Yeah, I think we could maybe get Jennifer's take on that. We don't need it for the town hall, I mean, the public meeting, but.
Yeah, if something doesn't pass, it just, that takes that letter in, in the land use chart.
Yeah, just takes, now you can't use K, it's reserved. The other discussion we had, Bernie, and we opted to leave it unchanged, is the definition of rental units. At one point, we just said, any dwelling. Because I thought, since we have introduced tiny homes, maybe we should put tiny homes in that list of things. Um, which led us to a discussion of, well, do we need to list them all? Can't we just say dwellings? But because we have defined them, I thought, or I think we all thought they needed to be in there, but we didn't put tiny homes in.
I had spoken to Gavin earlier, he said he was gonna make it, but.
You know.
Part of the problem, and I, I understand, I, I agree, I think there are things we need to do on pits. But I don't think we have time.
We had this, me and Bernie had this brief conversation before you got here.
Yeah, and particularly because.
I mean, if we want to work for, for next year, then that's one thing, but.
Sure, right, which I think we should do, but we also said we wanted to get direct input from.
Same conversation, when, Bernie said they expressed the same exact thing. And, um, yeah, I think it's a wise decision, um, that way, everybody's on the same page, planning board, the operators, the owners, um, and get everybody's feedback. And then there's no uproar, uprising when it comes down to, you know, making the changes. We don't have somebody going against what we want, what we're asking.
Well, they may anyway, but at least they've had an opportunity to input.
Express their concerns.
Okay, I'm gonna have to give that some thought on the tiny house consideration.
In the definition?
Right.
Okay.
Whether we, whether I think we need that.
Well, that, and this is the reason to bring it up.
Do you have your document on tiny houses in today?
Uh, yes.
Gotta find the right color, it's blue.
Blue was last week, but the white one you printed out with the.
Oh, here we go, here's tiny house. This is.
That's probably the one Ashley just brought up earlier.
Space. Okay.
See, even the definition says it's a living space.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm wondering, maybe we should say residential rental units include any, include any living space such as a dwelling, so forth. Then you don't have to put tiny house in, but a tiny house is defined as a living space.
Yeah, that also helps us with the, if I'm on, only renting one room in my dwelling. I just.
Well, that's in there, but you know what now?
It just dawned on me that I don't think we overtly. Oh, portion thereof, portion thereof. Yeah, 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 you got it.
Now I'm gonna totally reverse what I just said and say that residential rental units include any. I think it should specify tiny house. Because if we say any living space and leave it at that, then that broadens the definition. It leaves to question, what's a living space? Then you gotta define that.
Yeah.
Whereas this way, it's clear, if everything that we're saying.
Well, a tiny home is a dwelling, per definition.
Where, that's what, I just looked.
So do you even need to put it in there?
Well, I just looked at tiny house.
You know what I mean?
By definition, it, it's not.
It's not a dwelling?
A tiny house is defined as a living space permanently constructed on a frame or chassis and designed for use as permanent living quarters. That's the definition by main law.
Right.
So include any dwelling, dwelling unit accessory, dwelling unit residential, and/or dwelling multifamily. Or portion thereof in which a space is rented or offered.
Right, so it would, it needs to say.
Where am I concerning tiny home?
I would say right at the beginning.
Include any tiny house?
Yep, tiny house, dwelling. Or if you want to put it after multifamily.
We have to be consistent on home or house, that was an issue the other day.
I put tiny house.
Is that what we had on the, on the change? Yes, tiny houses, so it should be tiny houses.
So include any tiny house dwelling, dwelling unit accessory. Dwelling residential.
Yeah.
So that's two changes on there.
We need to add the districts.
Oh, yeah, three.
Add tiny house.
Correct the tiny house down below.
We have, I'm just questioning something in the next, in the residence, in that bottom of the, end of that paragraph. We have related by blood or marriage to the owner, I mean.
Where's that? Not in what I did, I don't think.
By, uh, the bottom of that paragraph, do we want to use the word blood there? Or because people get adopted, they're not blood relatives?
Where does it say that?
The last line of the definition.
Has equitable interest. No, tell me what letter you're looking at.
You're looking at a different one, Bernie.
Am I?
Yeah, okay, that's the one, it's on, it's on the definition here.
On residential reni, rental units.
Yeah.
Last ten.
Or intended to be occupied. Wait a minute.
Include any dwelling.
Sale or operate to be occupied or intended to be occupied by any person or persons not related by blood or marriage.
You mean, I'm just, you, you want to really break that open can of worms, you're, you got adoptions, not related by blood?
Yeah. The owner or operator to be occupied or intended to be occupied by any person or persons not related by blood.
Can't even use the word biological either on that one.
Well, you know, it.
It just sets it up for.
Oh, I do. Yeah, I understand. And so my thought was, well, say by blood or adoption, but then what if they have a foster child?
Yeah, no, it just sets it so much.
But there is a need to have something in there because that's the whole purpose of it as far as the concerns that if it's a family member, um.
What is a word that is.
Or.
That encompasses everybody related to you?
Um.
Or, you know.
I, I don't know. You know, what comes to mind for me is like not related under the law. But, I mean, what are we gonna do? Go around and ask people for adoption certificates and I, I don't.
You don't know that, they don't know that you know I'm a brother right now.
Mm-hmm.
You know? I mean, it's good faith is what you're asking somebody to, to, to say about it.
Yeah.
And I couldn't just be reading into it too much. I'm just.
Well, I, I.
Throwing it out there.
I can't really disagree with what you're saying, but. You know, as far as, um, if the issue, for example, is adoption.
Can you just leave it as related?
Law, if someone is adopted, they hold the same rights as a blood relative.
Can't you just leave it as, uh, as a person that's not related to the soul, to the owner? Does that, that, that.
Cause what does related mean? What does related mean? That's my girlfriend. We have a relationship. We are related to each other.
Related by family? Cause if you're legally adopted, you're family. If you're a stepchild, you're family, you're.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, that other document you gave me, you emailed to everyone, got into how many degrees of separation.
I was going through my emails and it was, it was an actual one that they had, the code enforcement had from 2020. And I, it just, it was, uh, I was going through some old stuff and trying to delete some things, and I came across it the other day and I was like, oh, boy. Should've used this.
Yeah, um. I mean, I'm thinking to, uh, if you look at an enforcement issue, so somebody complains about who their neighbor has staying at their house, which is not registered as a rental unit.
Mm-hmm.
So what would happen? You would go out, right? To enforce it, to investigate it, and if you find out that it's an adopted child, it's a foster child, it's, you know, seems to me that's probably going to be the end of the story.
Can you, can, so intended to be occupied by any person or persons for profit?
Well, that's already in there. It's rented or offered for rent. So you can.
I can give you any, I can.
I can let you come stay at my house for a month and I don't have to register it as a rental unit. If I just say, you know, you say my house burned down, I need a place to stay, and I say, here, take it. I don't want anything from you. That's not a rental unit.
Right, but if you're offered from our, if you're saying, I'll let you stay there for $500 a month.
Then it's a rental.
Then it's a rental unit. So you're making a profit, or you're making, uh, uh, receiving payment.
Mm-hmm.
What if you just put a period after offered for rent by the owner or operator? Period.
Because people want to be able to rent it to relatives and not be subject to that scrutiny.
I didn't, wasn't really thinking like that about.
Yeah, well, that was the part of what came up. So.
Well, would there be an exemption if you were renting it to family? I understand that's where you're going.
That is the exemption we're talking about.
Not related by family or marriage. I don't know.
Yeah.
I was just trying to dance around the word blood, but I don't even know.
Yeah.
How to do it. Any input, Gavin?
Well, you were saying you put any person or person's not legally related.
To the owner.
Yeah.
About blood and marriage.
Yeah, I would just take out blood or marriage.
But add legally.
Yeah, yeah, could be. I mean, I. I don't know. I mean, it's.
Well, you know, what just came to mind to me for that is I don't know if in view of same-sex marriage, whether domestic partnerships still exist.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm not married to my partner.
Right, so you have no legal relationship.
You have the, what is, how many years does that go?
Well, you have, there's no common law marriage in Maine, if that's what you mean.
There was like seven years in some states.
Yeah, but not in Maine, but in some states.
No, I thought if you, if you were together for more than like six years, then if you were to split. I thought there was a timeframe.
I think that's New Hampshire, it's like that, cause you hear about it in Maine, but.
Yeah, no, it doesn't exist in Maine.
Massachusetts, there's.
But, so, so if we go to what Gavin was talking about, if.
Right, but then they wouldn't be legally related.
You're not legally related, but again, so if a complaint.
That's a good thing.
If a complaint comes in and we know what, you know, there's the letter of the law and the spirit of the law. We know what the spirit of this law is.
Mm-hmm.
So if the CEO goes out and investigates and finds that you've allowed your partner to do something, and yeah, you are not legally related, but obviously you are, like, I don't know if you have children. Let's say she's the mother of your child. Obviously, the spirit of this ordinance.
Right.
Is being met.
You not legally related or in relations to the owner?
But then it's a girlfriend. It's, it's getting to, you know, it's gotta be.
That's really.
Yeah, I, frankly, I. I'll give it some more thought if I can think of something that I think.
All right, let me change it back.
But I don't think it's a fruitful discussion. I think we could be talking about this 45 minutes from now and not be any further.
Right, well, yeah, I don't see any other options than what we've kind of already stated.
I mean, even if it, you know, what came to mind for me was a legally, a relationship recognized under the law. But again, that's, that could be a foster child, an adopted child, could be any number, a marriage, but it doesn't incorporate a long-term partnership. It just doesn't.
Well, you could also be related, you know, renting it to someone who is related to you too, so.
And then there's no, you can do that without having to register it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, so they could be giving you money.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Correct, and there's no registration requirement.
That kind of makes sense, cause I know people who, they live together as a family unit, they all kind of pay rent, just goes into the common pot to, to pay bills and stuff.
Yeah, and a lot of the concerns around safety, for example, people coming here from, you know, Kansas who don't know where they are literally when they place a 911 call. The situation you're describing, you know where you are. If you have to call for help, you can describe where you are.
Mm-hmm.
You probably know where the windows are, how to get out of that building versus, you know, an unknown renter who comes in from Kansas.
Yeah, their first, first night there.
So a lot of the concerns, you know, this isn't about making things difficult for people, it's.
Can you just strike out by blood or marriage and just leave any person or persons not related to the owner? Just get rid of blood and marriage completely?
I, I don't believe so because, again, what is related?
I mean, a lot of this is going to be left up for interpretation on my, on mine or, or somebody else's behalf. They're gonna have to prove to me that, you know, if, if it becomes an issue.
I think there's less for interpretation with this.
Right.
There is, there are things that will require interpretation, but I think you're opening it to more interpretation if you say.
I just, well, I just, I was thinking that the word, leaving the word blood in there would have thrown some people off, but.
Yeah, well, I, I don't have a problem with blood, adoption, or marriage, but again, that still leaves open.
It just gets too lengthy.
A foster child, there's, there will always, no matter how you word this.
Right.
There will, it will come down to the letter of the law and the spirit of the law. There will be situations that will present.
Right.
That are gonna require that.
We can think about it and we can go to move on, so we can move on moving forward.
Okay, so are we?
Did we, did we address dwelling and?
We did. We opted to recommend to the board that we include tiny homes.
Okay, that's, that's all.
Instead of, we were gonna shorten it.
Right, those were the two options. And then you were saying, what if tiny homes don't pass and then we've got it in the defin.
Yeah.
But I don't think it matters if it's in this definition. We don't need to strike it out. We, it's just allowed, even though, even though tiny homes aren't in.
The state allows them, so if we vote it down as a.
Right, I don't think it would be in Harris. Okay.
I know there's a few in town, so I don't really see it being voted down.
That's fine with me.
Aren't permitted by.
Yeah, so that's what we had just, we had.
I mean, I'm just talking about, yeah.
Do I think that could be voted down? Yes, I do. It's not gonna matter because the state law is gonna supersede, but.
I think the tiny homes will pass before the rentals will. I think the rentals is gonna still give us a hard time, no matter what.
The other thing Gavin is we revisited the resource protection zone.
What page is that?
Um, well, on the book, it's 14.
Okay, yeah.
But we had made, we had a discussion about making a no for residential, and Pat thought, well, maybe there's existing places in the resource protection.
There are some.
Yeah, and are they renting them out? So I think that's why we left it R, and if that's what everybody.
Okay, so you're sticking with R for resource protection.
Yeah, I just, I was trying to bring Bernie up to speed on the discussions.
Station we had.
That we had, yeah.
Yeah, cause I mean, just quickly, I mean, you have child daycare as a home occupation is not permitted in the resource protection district. Like, it's fairly. I mean, any sort of extra loading on the septic, I guess, is discouraged.
Right.
I think it was the.
That's where.
Came from, you can tell.
Yeah, and that's kind of where I was opting for an N, but.
Right, that's kind of what I was thinking too, but it is true if you have one person at town meeting who lives in the resource protection district, like.
And rents it out.
Like Dennis, who wants to rent their place, then they would put up a stink about that one issue that really isn't a huge.
Shouldn't be a big problem.
Right.
Okay, so have we made it through? Everything that has been pending, other than anything additional that people have wanted to?
The, um, Jason's definition, which is a bigger discussion, cause there's a part in the back.
It's green paper, right?
Uh, yes, we got a new copy too. I don't know.
So that's definition of what?
Accessory dwelling.
Yeah, there's more to it though, cause like.
Yeah, 314, 514-1.
Okay, got it.
So there's an existing definition of a, of a dwelling unit accessory.
Right.
So that's problem number one. Um, and then in 514-1. Page 66. Jason, what was the issue here? Now, we, we.
Just that.
Well, I was.
This is where we look at A, only one accessory dwelling unit located within.
Right.
And owner occupied, single-family dwelling shall be permitted, whereas our definition says attached or detached from.
The, the definition that we were looking to go with says, adopt from the state says attached or detached. Within the permitted, permitted zones, districts.
Right, yeah, we're not gonna change the land use chart.
No, it was.
Right.
But then we had, as we talked about it more, we had, um, uh, what page is that on? It's like five point.
Was there other reference, the definition itself?
Yeah, that's on page 23. See, the definition of 23, to me, is okay.
Yeah, what is the cause for the concern?
Um.
We have dwelling unit accessory.
The issue is if you want a freestanding grandma's apartment over garage.
Detached garage. Right now, it, it, my ordinance, it's kind of throwing me all over the, it throws you all over the place. It doesn't really come out and say that it can be detached. It says it has to be within, so it means it has to be within the ba, in the basement, within another room, part of the, of the dwelling, or, um.
I, I would think we, it could be even easier, don't change the definition, since we have one.
Strike out within?
You could write, read it.
It doesn't say within.
It doesn't on the definition. It does on.
Go to page, I'm trying to find.
66.
Is it, is that what it is? All right.
Yeah, 66, 5.1, 4.1, 1.1A.
Yeah, so additional dwelling units, so ADU.
66?
Yes. So we have accessory dwelling unit and we have an additional dwelling.
A.
Oh, that's right, well, that was another issue we had.
We have two different things. We have an accessory dwelling and an additional dwelling.
Yeah, that has to be made accessory.
But there's also, I was just looking at, and it was on, I gotta find out what page it was on, um, uh, there is an actual accessory dwelling unit that I was just looking at that I didn't see prior. And I think it was on page 50.
Well. So let's just get Bernard updated on the, page 66, you're there, right?
Yeah, I'm there.
So we have. We just have additional in the bold heading.
Mm-hmm.
ADU, and then we have one, A, only one accessory dwelling unit, ADU. So we have two, two terms with the same acronym.
Mm-hmm.
But they have the, the word, words different between additional and accessory.
Right, so I, I think that needs to be, the title needs to be accessory. We don't have a definition for additional.
I have a question though. The way I'm reading this, the way it exists now, arguably, could someone have more than one dwelling unit accessory?
No.
If, if one is within the unit, the dwelling unit, and one is not within the dwelling unit.
There is something I'd, I'd have to find.
That's a little weird.
Because that's the way I'm reading it.
So what if?
To me, this is saying, the way it exists now, is if you have a single-family home and you want to add, you know, living space for a relative or whatever.
Look at A.
That's what he's saying, yeah.
Only one.
Maybe located within an owner occupied.
Okay.
So could someone currently have one within and still have one above the garage?
You get into.
And was that the intent? I don't know.
I don't know. I think you get into a multifamily situation at that point, which, ah.
Yeah.
And he's, cause multifamily dwelling units, any structure containing three or more dwelling units shall be.
Why?
It doesn't say a size where the additional dwelling unit gives me a straight up, oh, it does say 300, it says 800 feet or less. 800 square feet or less is for my ADU, where a multifamily unit says anything, any structure containing three or more. So once you pass that too, you've, you've already broken that plane. You know, you're in a multifamily.
Well, is an accessory dwelling unit? Well, is an accessory dwelling unit considered a dwelling unit?
Yes, it's defined as such.
That's what we've got back.
So how is this coming up as a problem?
When you interpret what you read right there, what do you see, what do you think? You can't, there's no detached garage house.
Right, that's the discussion. Are we, are we allowing them to have one above the garage right now?
Mm-hmm.
And if.
Got plenty of them.
If, if not, should we?
And, and the should be, I understand that we, you know, no shoreland, no resource protection, uh, no, you know, things like that where it becomes an iss, more of an issue. And that is, and I do believe it's in the, the, the land use chart, right Gavin?
I'm just looking at it right now, trying to find it.
It's right in the, the residential structure place, section. Take the first or second line down.
Yeah, yeah, it's B, accessory dwelling unit. CEO review and everything except resource surely and the Little Osiphe.
I think the easiest fix for that problem, I, I don't think the definition needs to change because you can read either way. It, it doesn't limit you to in the building or not in the definition. I think A needs to change, and I think the title needs to change, needs to say accessory. So A would need to say only one ADU located within in owner occupied, single family dwelling, or. What's the right term, on the grounds?
Yeah, per lot, only one accessory dwelling unit, per lot.
That might do it, then you don't even, yeah.
Owner occupied. Only one accessory dwelling unit located within.
No, strike within.
Uh, located.
On an owner occupied, single family dwelling lot shall be permitted.
Occupied.
Does that get it?
I think so. Single family lot. Shall.
Right, and then we, then we are, we're allowing the tiny house to be an accessory dwelling unit by doing that, which seems to make sense.
So do I read this right that in order to add an accessory dwelling unit, it has to be owner occupied? But then if they sell the house, then.
Well, you can't spread, you can't split your lot, this, these ADUs are, are not meant to be split from the lot, a lot of these times. Uh, people are asking for this because they don't have that, so right now, if you wanted to, um, create a detached garage situation, the previous CEO at some ti, sometimes, let's put it that way, would require, um, so if you're in the rule, you're, you're required to have two acres, that's your minimum lot size, two hundred and fifty feet of road frontage. In order to do the detached accessory dwelling unit, it would require four acres, double that, and then up to three hundred and fifty feet of road frontage or something like that. So three hundred and fifty feet of road frontage and four acres would get you what you needed.
Mm-hmm.
Or if you were in critical rule, it was five acres no matter what, and, eh, no, I take it back, no, that was, yeah, and fu, in critical rule, it doesn't change, it's, everything stays the same, it goes, it changes when you go into a multifamily, and everything doubles.
Yeah, so this, what, so if somebody had a two acre lot and they wanted to build a detached garage, get ADU, they just wanted a detached garage, would he not allow that?
No, he wouldn't.
No, that's okay.
That's fine, as long as you meet your lot coverage standards. That's, that was an issue, especially on, you know, in your location, you guys' location, your lots are so small. You can't, there's only twenty percent of per亩 surfaces in a lot of these lots. They're already used up, they don't have anything, and, you know, I have a hard time telling somebody they can't have an eight by eight shed on their property. Just my guilty conscience says, oh, I'd be so mad.
Right, you just have to get rid of some other impervious.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I got that.
Give take situation.
I just think the logic of his argument falls apart.
So i, if somebody wants to construct a two-family dwelling, how much land do they have to have to do that?
Two-family dwelling, you gotta go with what size is it, if, is one of the dwellings greater than eight hundred, because then it puts it into a multifamily. You double your lot size, as well as, uh, you have to have three hundred and fifty feet of road frontage. Yeah, there's a, it, it is a section in the, if you look at the land use chart, um, I don't have my thing on me, but it'll give you the last line in your land use chart on residential structures, does multifamily dwellings, and then there's a footnote, F nine. See Gavin, I'm learning the ordinance.
Yeah.
There's a footnote, F nine, so you flip to the, the page over and it explains to you what that is, what you, what your land, your accrual amount of land you need, as well as your road frontage. That goes, and that's for mul, that's, for, that's a duplex, so if you wanted to build a duplex, you know, F nine.
What about the accessory unit, is there a size limit on?
Eight hundred square feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because what I was concerned about is, you have an owner occupied property, somebody adds an accessory unit, and let's say there weren't size restrictions.
Yeah, no, it's.
They sell the house, and then you basically have a multifamily on a smaller lot.
Yeah, and you can't divide these lots, um, this is go, you know, it stays with the, with the, the principal property.
Yeah, okay.
Um, especially, um, if it's a non-conforming lot. If you wanted to divide it, obviously you could, if you had road frontage and acreage, but you can't make a non-conforming lot today. So.
Okay.
So there, there is a lot behind it, but it's just, it was more or less for just kind of helping me out, you know, defining things for when someone wanted to question me.
Yeah, okay, so you all got this.
Says right here, no building shall contain more than ten dwelling units.
I know, and even like critical rule, you don't allow anything greater than three units. I think three units is the max in critical rule.
Okay, so we're gonna change in the five point one, four point one, point one, additional dwelling units, we're gonna change that to accessory dwelling unit in the heading. And then we're gonna in, insert the, the terminology lot into A. So that it's.
And strike within.
No, man, we could leave.
I guess within a lot.
Yeah, within the lot would be fine.
Okay, so I'm just gonna make a note that Jason's gonna prepare a proposed revision.
Mm-hmm.
For planning board, next meeting.
Yeah, I, the reason why I didn't was because I thought that we were gonna be, I think we're getting around having to change all kinds of stuff by just doing this simple. But we had talked about there being maybe, there was a lot more to it. This will give me.
Well, I think this is a pretty simple change, if we don't, if we don't have to mess with the definition.
Yeah.
I think that change Gavin just articulated gives you.
So I know we got some striking out to do, but what I, what at the end result is gonna say, only one ADU located on an owner occupied, single family lot shall be permitted.
Yeah.
It's plain, it's simple, it's.
Yeah, and we have the eight hundred square feet, so they're not putting another house there. It could be a tiny one, but.
Alright, and then I got the, the heading change, well, that's good, okay. Um, I will have that one changed up.
Okay. So. Have we touched on all of them that have been before us?
Uh, we have now.
You guys talked about the solar.
So, we did, yeah. Um, there were a couple of things we wanted to go back to the full board, um.
Did we address the land use chart existing?
We did not do that. That's something we should probably circle back and, and look at.
Something I was, because, because we are having this, this solar is gonna be on the hearing, so we're gonna. And I have, I mean, I'm not like.
Well, we done.
We determined on how, how it needs to change, I just want to make sure that they're compatible.
Yeah, I, that's a good, we did not talk about that, and that's a good thing to address.
So on the land use chart?
Page eighteen.
Are there corresponding, is there corresponding language in the performance standards on that too?
I don't think there is anything about renewable energy in the, because I remember putting this, I was on the board when we put these two E and F into the land use chart, and I'm pretty sure that was the only change that was, that was made. But I could be wrong, I might as well look.
I just flipped through and I didn't see anything Gavin.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think, I think we would have been looking at it with those two solar.
Yes.
Projects we had, if there was something we.
Because we would have amended that by just putting in a whole new section.
Right, that would have placed this new document in this ordinance.
Right.
I don't think there is anything. So my biggest, um, issue with this, pretty much is we have solar energies on the new work at the top, solar energy system accessory is pretty much what E and F are talking about. Would be my inclination. But of course, F could, could cover large and medium solar farms, you know, which, which it needed to, we did use it that way.
But it, what if we just struck them? What do we lose since we've now called out solar specifically? What do we lose? Do we anticipate? The only thing I could think of is are we gonna have some wind? Somebody want to come in and do a wind kill birds?
Or some sort of renewable energy, hydroelectric. You know, we do have the, the waterways in the town. Somebody may want to reenact hydroelectric power plant at one of the dams, like down on Hoffer Road, there's one that was a, was designed that way, I mean, it's, it covers other types of renewable energy.
So what if we change E and F to read non-solar renewable energy?
Ah.
And then, then you drop down to solar.
Yeah, and then there's just a, I would be okay with that, but I, I want to try to address the situation where someone's in the shoreline zone, the resource protection district, or the Little Osiphe, and they want to put a, a home, home size, home scale, solar array on the ground mounted, next to their building.
We just had that conversation.
Right, and that's.
Separate from this.
Right, oh, you guys did.
We did.
Okay, it would happen.
Well, we didn't talk about that specifically, I don't.
I just, personally, I feel like when you're on the lake and you're looking at the shoreline, having solar panels on people's roofs is more visibly, visibly acceptable than having their yard filled with panels.
Yeah.
That's why.
And I didn't know if we wanted to, well, somehow.
It has to be for onsite use. Right, first of all, I'm also. That it's gonna come to that, that it's gonna be that prevalent?
I don't know.
At all?
Well, I just feel like we might end up with some issues where the DEP doesn't consider it a per, an impervious surface. And these things would be shedding water and causing runoff, be, you know, possibly less than a hundred feet from the lake.
So if it, are you suggesting it could be a DEP violation? Because if it is, then they can do it even if we don't regulate it.
No, I'm saying the DEP doesn't regulate it. And, and the, like, you know what I'm saying, the, the panels aren't considered impervious surface, so they, DEP would allow someone to put panels in the shoreline zone, probably. But I mean, if, if you alls are fine with having ground mounted, but right here, we have that ground mounted are not, we, F, renewable energy installed on a non-existing structure is not permitted in the resource protection zone.
I see.
And that's kind of what I want to, don't want to lose that by, in, in this process.
That's interesting.
I mean, I'm not like, you know.
Wow.
Hell bent on it, is what I've come up with.
Well, also, the way that reads, if I understand it correctly, if somebody buys a lot that is large enough they can construct, so it's a not existing structure, but they move forward and they are able to construct a new structure, then they wouldn't be able to put a solar panel in the new structure? Because it wasn't existing at the time of this? Is that what we would want to do?
They can't build a home in.
Right, in the, we're just talking about the resource protection. They can't build a new, they can't build anything in the resource protection right now. They can go through the thirty percent expansion process, you know, model.
I think there's a loophole there Gavin. If there's, um, like use within so much developed area, like five hundred feet, I mean, if, um, and the lot was created prior to something, it doesn't.
Oh, yeah.
There's, there is, there's, you can still build, but you have to have, you can't just have a lot out of the middle of nowheres and then say, okay, I'm gonna put a house here. But if you, like, I have a subdivision out on Fox's Ridge Road that was, resource protection was created after the lots were already defined.
Well, that doesn't matter, yeah. No, they, they over, it overlays that because they can no longer use their road frontage. When resource protection fell on top of existing lots, a lot of them lost their road frontage, which, which gave, made them less usable.
Right, but you can't, you can't take someone's building, you can't take their, bu, uh, building envelope away from them. You know, you, you can't say, if somebody bought a lot and then you go and say.
I'm just going by the land use chart.
Yeah, no, I know, but I've, I've gone over this with.
Dwelling.
I've gone over this with other people.
Accessory dwelling unit not permitted, two-family dwelling not permitted, multifamily dwelling not permitted. All the way down.
Yeah.
Even home occupation is not permitted.
Tiny homes are not permitted.
I don't know, maybe it's really not, not much to.
Well, if, if we go back to the existing change, so first of all, non-solar, and maybe we debate the R and the N there, but in the existing change, we have said accessory systems, so like for your house.
Mm-hmm.
On the roof, or even on the ground, and your lot across the street is okay.
Well, that's what we have tentatively right now, and that's kind of what I'm.
Okay, I wish you were here for the earlier discussion.
Oh, I know, I'm sorry.
Well, that's alright, because we had.
But we.
I had a disconnect, this is kind of what I was mentioning when we were ending the meeting last time, there's a disconnect because for the accessory systems, we said roof's okay, ground mounted, you need a site plan review. If it's other than for a single family home, or a multifamily home. And, and to me, there was a disconnect there, we ended up saying, ground, here, Bernie and I, and discussions with Jason thought, well, where it's permitted, uh, which is all of them, CEO review, those things for the small use, using, use on site of the electricity were okay. I know what you're saying, but that wasn't part of what we were discussing.
Okay, but we, we would be going counter to what we have existed.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
As long as we're, we're clear that that needs to be, I don't want to have, I, I don't. We're clear that that needs to be. I don't want to have I don't want to adopt this and still have this existent because it would be.
So Jason, while you were out of the room. Page eighteen of one oh eight.
Page eighteen. Okay.
Central Services, yeah. E and F.
Yep.
We talked about changing. To be non-solar renewable energy in each case, so that then if we add. GHI, it's clear that that pertains only to solar.
Non-solar.
Yeah. Non-solar renewable energy.
Needs to be added.
Right, as a you know, as a draft.
Okay.
And in this. The current draft. Um, we'd need the.
Yeah.
But also, shouldn't all these be?
Highlighted.
Highlighted and underlined. Yeah. Okay. So, yeah.
No, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say on the. Additional discussion, like things that. You weren't here for Gavin. They'll all come up before the board anyway.
Right. Right, sure. It's good to just be.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, if all three of us have a are, you know.
I don't understand. What does F mean? A non-existing structure? So that means a building new? What's that?
Well, that could be like this, those supports that the panels go on, I think.
Okay, so that's trying to say ground metal. I mean, yeah, ground mounted.
Yeah, but it could also be a windmill.
Yeah, but I'm just trying to make sure to your point about.
Like it's supposed to be installed in a structure in F, but. Because it says non-existent, why doesn't it just say? Renewable energy. Yeah.
I was just trying to address your concern of making sure those agree with GH and I.
Yeah, right. That's that's all we need to do.
And I think E does.
Yeah. I mean, this still doesn't address all types of renewable energy, probably. But that's all right. This is installed on a non-existing structure. It's like.
Yeah, that confuses me now. But.
You see what we're looking at in F? It's almost like they're saying. Just we.
It's installed on a non-existing structure.
And it's also.
Additional use review. Except. For resource protection zone.
And that kind of brings us back to. What is a structure? And. I mean, because you could you could just lay your solar panels on the ground. They're not on a structure at all.
Yeah, reality is they'll mount them.
Right, but I mean, in terms of this on a structure, I'm just trying to think of an example where. Your renewable energy wouldn't be on a structure. It would be like a windmill. It's not on the. I mean, it could be on your building. They have those small ones, but it's most likely it is in itself. The structure, sort of.
But if you if you require a conditional use permit, then every one of them is going to be subject to. You know, questions and. Review its uniqueness. What are they proposing?
Yeah, and it's non-solar now, so I mean, how many of those are going to get?
I wouldn't think a lot, but.
It's hard to know what technology is going to do.
True.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, ten years ago, we wouldn't have thought there would be giant solar farms up here. We thought they'd do that. In Arizona or something.
Mm hmm. Yeah.
So. Because it's hard for us to keep up with the times with this thing.
Yeah, well, certainly the current energy costs are going to push people to consider things they may not otherwise, huh?
So we're going to go.
By that, I don't mean robbing a bank. I mean alternative energy sources.
I know you can't carry enough money in these days.
So. Okay.
So add non-solar to the beginning of E and F.
Non-solar.
Non-solar, right.
We don't have anything about just energy generally. Energy systems generally. We only have renewable. Like a normal. Energy system. Which, of course, we don't need to worry about that, but.
Yeah, you like generators or something?
Yeah, I mean, they have diesel generators that produce power, too. We don't have anything about that in the. Not that we have to deal with that.
Yeah.
Right, you guys are pretty much wrapping up.
Yeah, I think I did want to bring up because I understand you wanted to work on. Mineral extraction.
Yeah, if anybody has any, at least read through the conditions and. And look at the. Hancock.
Yeah, I've started looking at that, but I don't foresee that going to done.
You don't want to turn it.
For this year. Well, also because. We've agreed. That we'll get all the stakeholders together and so forth, and I don't see how that would logistically happen in time to. To generate a document.
Yeah, well, we could do do our own work separately from getting them together because they.
Then we're going to redo it after we get their input.
Well, I mean, they're not going to. What input are they going to give us on saying that putting it right in the ordinance that they can't mine below five feet above the water table? They can give all the input they want. It's not going to change my opinion of that.
Well, that's true, but in my view.
Some of these things.
I'd rather tackle this as a comprehensive project than piecemeal.
Yeah, I. It's it's big changes, and I don't know if we would get it done in time. I think. What we what I would recommend we do is we start listing the things we want to address. And maybe at another workshop. What time is it now?
Five.
Five.
Oh, it is that it's after five?
It's five now. And we could start. Doing as you say, we go through and look at the what what exists, what we think. Needs based on what we've seen from maybe Hancock or other other sites and just start doing what we did with rentals and.
Right.
And the others to get it on paper. And I I don't think we can. I don't think given timelines, we're going to be able to do a comprehensive job at that.
No, I I would agree for this year. And we don't know how much more time, even what we have done, is going to take. You know, nothing is. Final and approved by the board, and and we're. Under a time constraint here, so.
Okay.
That would be my view. I mean, I don't disagree with you. There are some things that we as a board may. Feel that's, you know, that's the bottom line. That's what we're going to propose, whether it's by. General consensus or not. With all the stakeholders, but I think. In most instances, hopefully, there will be things that we can reach by consensus or that. We might do differently because we're not aware of what their suggestion might be or perspective and all that, but. I'd rather take a comprehensive.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, excuse me. There's a way to frame it, too. I I don't think we just have a start a meeting with a blank sheet of paper. I think we have to go through and do. These things that we think need to be addressed, you know. Five feet above use fees, whatever it might be, but have that laid out, kind of like we laid out. Rentals even before we get it into the right format with. Different things, so then at least we have, here are the areas we want to address. Here's some of our thoughts.
Yeah, how to address.
Get input and and so that would take a lot of work.
Yeah.
I mean.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We dubbed around for a long time on rentals and tiny homes and.
You feel like we're going to have another one of these workshops?
I'm open to them. I I think realistically. We need to realize we ain't going to get there for for pits at this point, but.
Not for this year, no.
I I also don't want to get to the point.
Review these things further.
Oh, I think we should leave what's scheduled.
What is scheduled?
What is scheduled? Is the one for next?
I didn't put anything on the next. I was doing it actually.
For a week. Okay, next week, I would say there isn't any point because we won't have had a planning board.
What I wanted to do was review these prior to Thursday, or we can do it Thursday right when we first come in. And then you can vote to let the public see if that's you voted to push the other ones through. Do you still need to vote to push what we just did through?
Yes.
So if we were.
We're going to be scheduling a separate hearing for that.
Right.
Right, well, there's people coming in that Thursday, right?
Right, but they've already got those draft documents, right? Don't they have?
They only Bernie updated on this?
I understand there's a public hearing scheduled to set.
Just for well, well, and what I did because. They scheduled the hearing and we weren't prepared. I made a motion that we would only address these three. Articles at this hearing, so then we have. Rental units and. The green sheet.
That's the definition, right?
Yeah, the yeah, and then we have the definition of structure.
Right.
Kind of goes with the green sheet in my head anyway. And then we had the potential mineral extraction, so I left those three to be scheduled for another hearing later in March, once giving us more time to. Yeah. Finesse these things before the hearing.
And I don't know if there's going to be another hearing later in March.
I don't think it's.
Well, we'd have to.
Were you going to vote as a board to?
Yeah, the so those, like I said, those dates were set by the select board. For the warrant finance committee, and that thirty days supposedly, and we even very I I called the town attorney, though that is for not it's not for this situation.
Well.
But in either.
What it comes down to is that the planning board should be voting, deciding when the hearing is going to be and voting on it themselves. Because while you were gone. We the CEO wasn't here for three meetings, two or three meetings. The last two workshops were canceled. And the hearing got basically shoved into position.
Well, no, it didn't. That's been there since December, and I'd given that. I gave it.
This sheet right here is based off what we did in twenty twenty.
No.
And it was a diff we had different ordinance changes. We had a different planning board. We had a different CEO. We had a different secretary. We were ready for this timeline.
The changes were made a year ahead of time.
Yes, and they were all prepared. Right, well.
But the bottom line is, in my view.
Well, so we I broke it up into two hearings, basically, because I felt like we weren't ready to put.
But is that.
All these things through.
Are those two hearings within the timeframe that the warrant finance committee needs? They're not.
Well, no, you can't just say that. We haven't voted as to when the next. Hearing is yet because we haven't had another meeting.
Okay.
So we can easily.
When's the deadline for them?
He's got the sheet right there.
For more finance.
What we did in twenty twenty. This is not a deadline.
Is that the?
A sketch plan for when things could be done and have been done in the past.
Okay.
But if you look in the zoning ordinance on page eight.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to tell you that not.
Well, I don't care what the attorney said. It does pertain. I mean, I'm not trying to drag this whole thing out, but. If you want to put these other ones forward on the third. You know, we need to decide that, but if you look at page eight.
Yeah.
In any case, the planning board shall hold a public hearing at least thirty days prior to the meeting of the governing body. Now, the town meeting is in June. Thirty days prior to the town meeting is May. There is no reason we can't hold the a hearing later in March. And if you look at this where they're telling us that it needs to be to the warrant finance committee.
Yeah.
The if you look at it, the warrant warrant finance committee has six weeks just to vote on the work that we already did. They're they don't need six weeks to do that.
He doesn't have that sheet that you're looking at, Gavin.
Well, this sheet, that's what I'm saying. This sheet is just preliminary sketch plan. It's really, it's not.
Okay, but do we?
But if you feel like we now are ready to put all these things forward to the March third hearing. The biggest reason was that I didn't feel like without you being here, short-term rentals, I didn't feel like I wanted to put this to the hearing until we were done with it. Mineral extraction, we we had an empty template. And so I felt like it was going to be preemptive to be putting these things forward to a to a hearing that the planning board didn't themselves set. If we had voted for that date, I would be all in favor of it, even if I'd personally voted against it. But there's no reason. They cancel our our workshops and then they shove a hearing down our throat ahead of time, just rubbing it the wrong way.
So you want next Wednesday or no?
Yeah, I think we should.
Okay.
I think we should.
I mean, we can review the the new drafts from the changes.
You're going to have new drafts from this.
I will have. We would be able to hopefully present it.
The next Thursday after that is the meeting, right? Oh, no, that's.
March third is.
It would be the seventeenth, but the board's got to vote on those. I mean, this is a workshop. We can't vote on it.
Right, well, you can vote prior to the. We're going to be having a hearing the same night we voted on the changes we did at the workshop. It's just it's the 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 progress is not sufficient. And the main reason is we were understaffed last month. And.
Well, let me just put this out there because the my understanding is at the meeting, the public meeting. It doesn't have to be in final form because part of the meeting is to solicit input. And we might still tweak something and change it after the meeting.
Oh, absolutely, but the thing is.
All right.
If we don't get the input, we change it in a way that was not based on public input after the hearing, we'll have to hold another hearing anyway. Which is fine with me. I don't mind.
We had to because they forgot about the first hearing. We had.
It was too soon. We had it February seventeenth that one year, twenty twenty. Everybody said that wasn't a public hearing.
Right.
You're putting this stuff on the the warrant, and you didn't have a public hearing. We're like, yes, we did. It was February seventeenth, and they're like, that was so long ago now.
Yeah, I understand.
And I don't know if I should ask this. This is I'm going to take a sidestep to this one, but I don't know if I should even be asking it without the chairman present. March third, do we want any? I have. Do you we want any like anything else other than the the public hearing? Because I know the there was that greatest practical extent that wanted to come in as well as. McCoy extraction wants his conditional wants to come in for a conditional use. I told him the end the third week in March.
Yeah.
Tyler was looking to get in, Lake Limbens consultant was looking to get in. Do you want to do that? Quickly before the public hearing, or do you want to just say public hearing only?
Well, I think it partially has to do with whether or not we're going to be addressing all of them, five of these things, because that is a lot to cover in one night anyway.
Well, don't we have to send those out ahead of time? So we've only sent out the first three. We haven't sent.
Well, they need to be posted so people know what they're coming to the hearing for.
Right, and is there a timeframe associated with that?
They don't even have to be posted. I have to tell. We have to post that there's a hearing. If they want to come into the town hall or they want to call me and get copies of it, then they can get it. We don't really. I haven't I haven't been instructed.
But we don't even have copies to be.
Right.
On on. I think the only one that might be.
None of them really.
Yeah. Tiny homes, are there still changes on that one, or is that one?
I feel like one of them was good, but I'll make these I'll get these typos.
Well, we got to add the districts, the this was wrong.
Yeah, no, I mean, none of them are are ready to say this is what's going to be at the hearing right now.
Even then, if there's a few mistakes, it's fine because we're going to change. We're going to. I'm sure there was going to be some changes.
Right, but we as long as you're clear that we will have to have another public hearing to address those changes anyway.
You sure you have to on that one? I think we already addressed it once.
We'd be saying to the public, this is what's going to be on town meeting. They're going to say. We'd be saying to the public, this is what's going to be on town meeting, they're gonna say, okay, that's great, no comments, next thing. But then we're like, oh, actually, we want to change this, this, and this on tiny homes. And then we put it to town meeting. We need, we haven't informed the public.
Yeah. Well, and there's two we haven't.
I just felt like, I felt like we needed more time, and the ordinance allows us to have more time. So. Why not, why not take that time? Especially when. We didn't, we were short-staffed, we didn't have it here to do it.
I know, we're gonna, I know North Star Planning wants to come to that hearing, so if there's any changes, and he can take the general census of the. Public to this thing, he said he would like to. Sit, sit in it and.
But you're gonna be able to get these.
I'm gonna have them changed, yeah.
These changes to him and get it back from him.
Yeah, he's just looking for feedback from. The residents, and if, and if he has to make any changes, then he.
I don't think he needs to come to the hearing. Because we.
Yeah, we'll tell him.
I agree, because we can.
They'll be, oh, this one change, and we'll send him an email.
I'll, I'll inform him that I can save some money.
Yeah, no, I mean, I.
Yeah, so here's what I think, generally speaking, we should do everything we can. Which may not be everything, but everything we can to get as many things in final form.
Yeah.
As possible, because.
So, yeah.
Because also, if, let's say we have, we anticipate six warrant articles, and we've got three ready to go, and we give those to warrant finance. Then they can start on those, you know, it's not like they're going to deal with everything in one meeting, so if they get some in one meeting, and then some two weeks later or whatever. I would imagine that will be okay. And, but I. I would want to do it, first of all, to be cooperative and, you know, work together, get as much as it before them. I also wouldn't want to jeopardize getting anything done that we might get done. By virtue of delay, holding back, or not doing everything we can to find. That's, that's all we can do, you know, we'll do everything we can and hopefully everybody will.
Sorry.
That's all we do. That's the way I see it, but.
So are we having a workshop next Wednesday?
He sounded like he was a go, but.
It's not gonna hurt, I guess, even if it's just looking, but you'll have.
We'll have.
What we talked about today.
Should be a quick one.
So if you'll have those ready, then we as a committee can say, yep, those are ready for the planning board the next night, that will save time.
There's no reason to.
No, start by now for that.
Yeah, we'll do it next Wednesday.
I agree, I don't want to be. Sorry for the sidebar.
Yeah.
Even, so it should be a quick review. Assuming the board is okay with what we've said, it should be a quick review, and then we have time to start on mineral extraction, because I don't want to be. You know, in the fall, and we're now starting, geez, we gotta do something on it, and then it gets to be the holidays, and then it's in January, and we don't have shit again. You know, so I think. If, if.
Why not start working? Why not start framing the discussion?
Start framing it, first of all, look, make a list, see what we want, and we can. At a workshop, we can all start taking notes and combine it and.
Yeah.
You know, make it look. Make it so it can be a framework of discussion, then we can use a workshop, we will invite those guys.
Right, right, we'll have something to.
To, to go.
Topic of conversation.
Yeah.
So, in answer to your question, I think you do need to talk to Chris about. What to schedule and what not to schedule, but my inclination is less is more, because the public meeting is the priority. And advancing the warrant articles. Are we ready to?
You say it to me?
No.
I just, I think we are gonna be including. These two at the hearing.
Actually, Jennifer, are you free for a minute?
We didn't vote on it.
We didn't vote on it?
You need Jason right now? Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
He's not getting my humor.
Oh, I think I got it, so. Okay, so just for the record, the town administrator just stepped in, so we're gonna ask some questions if we can about. The timing of us having things ready for warrant finance. The the situation we're in.
Ready for the board of selectmen, so the, the board of selectmen has set the timeline for everybody, including social services, department heads, committees, boards, and they have that authority. To set the timeline.
No question. So the situation we're in is, you know, today's Wednesday, the 23rd. We are gonna do another workshop next Wednesday.
Any timeline so I can reference it?
Gavin has it right now.
Can I look at it right?
And so we don't have a select, a planning board meeting until next Thursday, a week from tomorrow. There's no way we could have a special one, because we can't get proper notice, so as of next Thursday. At best.
Calendar up, go ahead, I'm listening.
We'll only have some of the warrant articles ready. What we're proposing, because next Thursday is the public meeting that's scheduled.
Public hearing to get voter input.
Okay, well, so if we, if we got everything ready for the public hearing.
On the third.
We, we couldn't do that without, at the beginning of that session, a vote on what's pending, so the public would be sitting here while we're deliberating. Here's what we have, is this our final draft, yes, put it out to the public. What if after that meeting, in their input, some of what we've proposed changes? Then do you have to have another public meeting?
Well, right, and so two things, I guess, the first thing that come to mind, so when you have the public hearing on the third, you don't have to have voted on your warrant articles, because the idea with that public hearing is that you're gonna take voter input, so you can. Present them as drafts, you know, as a consensus of the planning board, this is what we're proposing, you take your voter input, and then you decide if you want to make any changes, and then at some point, vote. And decide if that's the final document moving forward, do you know what I mean, you don't have to necessarily vote before the first public hearing.
But Gavin's of the impression that then if there's any change, if we say, here's our draft, and the public says, oh, that's fine, and then we still internally, we tweak it. Then we have to have another hearing.
Well, and you have another hearing scheduled on Thursday, May 5th, so there are two public hearings scheduled on here, the May 5th. Two public hearings, the first one is really for voter input and helping make any changes, the May 5th one is it's done. You know, this is done, this is our, that's the 30 days according to the amendment that you have to meet, so the one that you're having this next Thursday is really just for input. So, you know, after your input from all your public hearing, the next day or the next meeting, you can say, okay, we heard from A, B, and C, these are any changes we want to make, make your vote. The public, you know, will start coming in and getting drafts, and then you'll have, you've got a public one on May 5th that meets the 30 days. That's the official public hearing, this one is to take an input.
Okay, and when is the deadline for us to give these to warrant fin, or to the select?
The selectmen, so essentially, we had put it on Friday, May 4th, now. The warrant and finance is supposed to, took the calendar from me. Warrant and finance is supposed to get the warrant the final, the following Friday, because they, as an elected committee, they insist on so many weeks to have the entire warrant to start going over each article.
After the May 4th hearing?
No, no, after the, no, March, they start going over it March 11th, yeah, and they'll, because they're gonna pull in. Social services, every department, they're gonna meet every week in all of March and April.
And so do you foresee a problem if, let's say we're gonna have six warrant articles, and we have three that we have in final form, and we say, here, take these. We still have three more we got to work on over the next week or two. To bring into final form, because, I mean, I understand, but yet also, to me, it's logically, they're not gonna act on all of them in one week, so if we give them. Three of the six.
Right, but the idea is that every time that we, they're expecting us us to turn over a warrant to them, you know, a warrant with, you know, the first few articles of electing the officers, the next three are zoning. They don't want, you know, articles six, seven, and eight that are gonna be pending, you know, planning board, you know, just like a budget that might not be submitted if a department hasn't submitted a budget, you know. That was the purpose of the timeline back in December, but, I mean, I can buy you some time, let's figure this out. I'd be more apt to, are we expecting that for March 3rd that you're gonna have all six to present to the public?
Uh, in order to do that. At that same March 3rd meeting, we would be having to have a discussion amongst the board. And vote, is this our final, you know, at this point, is this our final draft?
Of the other three, so three are done.
Of all, all six, right? We voted on three.
Did you?
Oh, okay.
So they voted on three.
Yeah.
So the, so if you have another workshop next Wednesday.
Right.
Will you have your other three done and ready to present to your fellow board members?
On the next day.
At the next meeting.
We would hope for that, that's what we would work towards.
I mean, we can push, I can. We can push the warrant articles, so we can push the warrants articles, I'd rather have them all or none. Maybe I don't want to give the warrant and finance, you know, half of them, so if we give them the warrant on the 11th. Without the planning board articles, and I'll speak to the board tonight, and I'm speaking prematurely, but I will tell them that you've asked for a little more time, that I don't expect to be a problem. If you guys scheduled another meeting on March 10th. To finalize any zoning articles, so that'd give you a chance to have a warrant, warrant, another workshop next week. You know, have the public hearing on the third, give the public as much input on all six articles as you can, let them know that there's gonna be an official meeting coming up, you know, official public hearing in May. Meet on Thursday, March 10th. And then even if you need to tweak it, I mean, I mean, I can buy you, you know, a week, week and a half if you need, but I'd rather have them all.
Yeah, okay, and can you, if it makes sense to you in terms of working relationships, can you give them, warrant finance or the select board. The choice of, you know, is it better for you to get none or to get three and three, just because. What I wouldn't want to have happen is to have everything we've done fall by the wayside because of that.
I mean, it's the board of selectmen's warrant at the end of the day, and the board of selectmen, I do not believe, and I, you know, and I speak hopefully from the experience, that they're going to. That if you're a week behind in these articles, you know, we, our budgets were due as department heads on Monday, January 1st. I probably got the last one last week, so, you know what I mean? We build the schedule knowing there's a little flexibility in there.
Yeah, I just. Yeah, and I just saw what time it is, and I can come to the meeting. I mean, I'm not the chair.
Yeah, no, I'm gonna, I mean, I have no problem, just, I'm gonna have a quick conversation with Chris, and we'll just tell them that, you know, we're, we're about a week out, let's go ahead and. Schedule the public hearing, I mean, I'm sorry, schedule the workshop next week.
Next Wednesday, yeah.
Um, the second, you've got your meeting on your third, go ahead and schedule the, you know, another workshop on the 9th and a special meeting on the 10th, just to be done. Because worst case, you might still make it, because on the 10th, if you had a special meeting, you might be able to finish up, and I still might be able to get to the. The warrant and finance by Friday, the 11th, so we might be okay.
Yeah, so can you discuss that with Chris? Because he, then he can, okay.
Most importantly is, is, I can't stress enough, the public hearings, I mean, you've got two, one to really hear input.
Yep.
And you can't hear input, though, we have public already asking about the notice, and they want to see drafts, they want to know what articles.
That's, yeah, Gavin discussed that, yeah.
So that's really the big thing, and then, you know, because by the time May 5th public hearing comes around, you really wouldn't be making any changes at that point, it would already be on the warrant.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thanks, so are we done for tonight? Okay, so, thanks, Jennifer, appreciate it. So it's 5:30 PM, and we're now gonna close the workshop, and. As was stated, we anticipate another workshop a week from tonight, and then the next planning board meeting is next Thursday. Thank you.